I'm going to take a couple of days to play in my yard, so.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this March meeting, regular meeting of the Olathe Board of Education, to order. Mrs. Carpenter, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Ashley?
Here.
Ms. Churchman?
Here.
Dr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Mr. Poland?
Here.
Mrs. Willhout?
Here.
And we have a quorum to conduct our meeting tonight. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Barry to introduce our guest for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Tonight, we have two very special guests to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance, two Spelling Bee champions. And if you would come forward and lead us, and then we'll introduce you immediately after.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'd like to meet these two young ladies if we could now. Our first one is Kavya Shivasankar. Kavya is, the third year in a row, she's been the Olathe Spelling Bee winner. So I think that deserves some applause right off the start. She is a seventh grader at California Trail Junior High School, and she's a straight-A student. She takes part in California Trail's Battle of the Books. She loves all of her classes, and she wants to be a neurosurgeon. She plays the violin privately, and on top of all of that, they say she's just a very, very friendly student. So we're very pleased to have you tonight. Your principal is Mr. Larry Katsev, who is here tonight. Would you thank you? And then, do you have some family in the crowd tonight?
Yes, my mom, my sister, and my grandma all came over there.
Helping her tonight is Erica Chang, who attends school at Briarwood, and she was the second-place winner in the Olathe Spelling Bee this year. So again, congratulations to you, Erica. Erica's other interests besides spelling are diving, playing tennis, playing the cello in the school orchestra, and playing the piano. And your principal is Julie Richards. Is Julie here tonight? Wonderful, thank you. Would you like to introduce some parents or family?
My mom, over there.
Thank you, girls, for helping us tonight. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, ladies, for helping us with the Pledge of Allegiance. We appreciate that. We're going to take a little departure from our normal agenda today for a special recognition, and Laura Lee is going to come to the podium. We have some distinguished guests with us tonight, and we want to honor and recognize them at the front end of our meeting.
We'd like our guests representing the Professional Development School Partnership to come forward, and I'm going to ask you to come up this middle aisle, so no one trips over any wires. We have with us Dr. Michael Lane, President of Emporia State University; Dr. Tess Mering, Dean of Emporia's Teachers College; Dr. Jean Morrow, Chair of Teacher Education; Dr. Nancy Smith, PDS Olathe Coordinator; Amy Welch, PDS Site Coordinator, and members of the original PDS Design Team; Dr. Allison Banikowski, Associate Superintendent; Luann Hermrich, Director of Curriculum and Instruction; and Earl Martin, Director of Elementary Education. And we're glad that all of those who could be with us are here tonight. Last month, we were so proud to recognize the Professional Development School, which provides a year-long clinical school experience for seniors from Emporia State University's Teachers College as a finalist for a national award. This month, the program, which began as a partnership between Emporia State University and our district 15 years ago, has been named the National Award Winner, one of only two districts in the nation, to receive the Distinguished Teacher Education Program from the Association of Teacher Educators. The PDS program is one of the reasons our district is known for innovation and for its high quality of professional development, which helps us to achieve our goal of recruiting and retaining the best. So congratulations to the district and to Emporia State University Teachers College on this national recognition. I think that Dr. Mering has a few remarks, and when she finishes her remarks, I'm going to ask all of the PDS participants and representatives to come forward for the photograph.
Well, thank you, Laura Lee. It gives me great pleasure, on behalf of Emporia State University, to share the ATE Distinguished Program Award with the entire district of Olathe Schools. This award could not have been possible without the efforts and the support of the State Board of Education for the Olathe School District, of all of the mentor teachers, of the building principals, the staff members, and of course, the individuals from Emporia State University who have helped make this program a success and a national award winner. So it gives me great pleasure to share this award with Dr. Peddall and Dr. Linda Willhout.
Okay, if you would all quickly move to the front for the mega photograph. Principals and participants. That was a good thing. Okay, this is going to be a video shot?
I like your shirt, Linda. I like your shirt.
Do they need to squinch for video, or is it okay to be spread out? Okay. Thank you very much.
Let's give them another hand.
At this time, Dr. Barry is going to come forward and provide us with an overview of tonight's agenda before we begin.
The Board of Education has a full evening of work tonight, starting with four presentations that will be given at the very beginning. We're going to continue the cycle of presenting parts of the strategic plan, and so tonight will be the Involvement in Climate section. We're going to hear a little bit about the innovation process in the Olathe School District, a Families Learning and Partnership Program, as well as a legislative update. We are then also going to be pleased to recognize some business partners tonight, and that will be followed at about 7:00 or thereabouts, a time for public comments tonight at the board meeting. The board will then take up regular business items, the work of the board each month, and the next consent agenda with 12 items presented to them. That will be followed by five specific items under the category of bids, contracts, and agreements. And that will be followed by other action. And tonight, we have five different action items for consideration, including the boundary determination for Woodland Elementary, along with some board appointments that need to be made. And then finally, the board has received information on 14 different items that will appear in future Board of Education meetings, and they have the opportunity to ask for more information or have things clarified. And they've also received some written information on several programs. That will all be followed, then, by an executive session tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Barry. With that, we'll move on to item 2.01 on our agenda. We're dealing with Strategic Direction, Involvement in Climate. Dr. Gary George, Mr. Earl Martin, Cindy Gilmore, and Heather Schoonover will be presenting.
Thank you. This evening, we're going to continue the process that we've been involved in, where every few months, we share another section of the strategic plan with you, our progress on that, and a copy, and the relevant portions of the balanced scorecard. And I'd like to thank the people who are here with us, and also Dr. Bev Graham for her work in helping to pull some of this together. It's been a collaborative effort involving a number of different people as we work on this, and some people have been working very hard to put up the numbers that we have, and we'll be sharing that with you momentarily. I might comment that we'll have a couple of breaks as we go through this presentation. There'll be some opportunities for questions, and we'll pause at a couple of different places. This particular item pulls together information from a number of different departments and divisions in the district, and so we have kind of a group presentation this evening to share with you. And we'll go ahead and get started. There are several objectives in this area, and you can see those listed there. We're interested in increasing the engagement of stakeholders, and that includes parents and guardians and others. We're interested in a safe and healthy learning environment and work environment for our stakeholders, and we're interested in an environment that will encourage and support healthy lifestyles. And then finally, we're interested in an environment that provides some awareness of diversity as our community becomes more diverse. On the last item, we are just now beginning to get data from our Employee Climate Survey on it, so we won't get into a lot of detail on that tonight, but that will be coming to you at a little later date. And at this point, I think I'll have Heather step forward and take over.
Thank you, Dr. George. Our Goal Five, enhancing the climate and engagement of all our stakeholders. We want to remind you that we've shared with you in September, our Communities That Care overview, and also in January, the new Parent Leadership Institute that we're doing, and that certainly ties in with this goal. Tonight, we're going to talk about volunteerism, our community involvement, then we'll go into nutrition and wellness, our student health and safety, and our employee wellness program. I'm excited to talk about our volunteering. We have two really strong programs going. The senior-serving schools, right now, is at 175, and we've seen a strong growth with our Youth Friends Program. That's where we bring anyone in the community. It could be a senior, mom, dad, into our classrooms and work with our students one-on-one or in a group setting. We've really strategically looked at how we can recruit volunteers, and so we have built some partnership with some businesses. But one thing I want to share, too, is we've seen some success with partnerships with our faith community as well. And we certainly run some volunteer referral programs within each of those. The value of the program, it's not just in the numbers. We really go back and survey our volunteers, and we were excited to find out that 96% of our youth friends were satisfied with their mentoring program. We also go back to our teachers and the school to get feedback. Were they pleased with the mentors in the classroom? Were they helping them academically and socially and emotionally? And we certainly have had strong feedback with that. One thing we want to point out, that we have had recruitment campaigns, both at the beginning of the year in September, and then we also run those in January, too, just right after the first of the year to increase mentors. And also, 88% of our senior-serving school volunteers reported that they'll be coming back next year as well. Talking about bringing our community in, but now we want to share with you how our students are going out into the community. That's a very, very important goal for us as well. With our Communities That Care Survey, we certainly track that. That's where we research with our sixth grade, eighth grade, 10th graders, and 12th graders in that survey, and we found out that 64% of them were saying that they were involved in community service, but we want to increase that. So strategies are within our 21st Century Programs within our high school. We have, in our second year, an annual service summit that Mr. Ader has been very integral in starting that up. We have Youth Friend Core Mentors going out into the community as well. Our National Honor Society, we're working with that, and also in our student development with our Youth Congress initiatives.
We want to talk a little bit about the wellness policy, and one of the reasons for doing that, both here as well as at the district site council meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, is we feel like maybe we don't yet have a lot of awareness about the fact that we do have a policy in place. And, of course, the first question on this slide, why do we have such a policy? Because it's actually mandated by both federal and state law that we have such a policy, and we feel pretty good about the process that we've made thus far. Okay, somebody help me with that. That's what I hear, but it's not moving. Okay, I can't even read it. No, that's not going to work. Okay, thank you. Now, that's supposed to move it, right? There it is. All right. Thank you. If you just kind of take a look at some of the statistics that are on this page, I think this is one of the reasons that we're even talking about this. I think you probably read in the paper almost every day the need that we have to pay attention to the wellness of our students as well as our staff. And so, our policy addresses really four different areas that we're going to really briefly mention that's involved in our wellness policy, and that has to do with nutrition, nutrition education, physical activity, and then staff wellness. Nutrition, again, you can kind of see what we've listed here in terms of continuing to provide healthy choice opportunities for our students, both at the elementary and the secondary level. And you can see some of the things that we've done to address that. We try to pay attention to what's our measurement to indicate whether or not we're making progress in each of the areas that we're talking about. And Mr. Kingery has found a survey that we've been able to use to kind of benchmark how we compare with other districts that are doing surveys with food service, and we compare very favorably. You can kind of see, our goal is 90%, and the last survey that was given gives us a really very favorable comparison with that benchmark. But we want to continue to improve in that area and offer healthy choices for students, but also, they have to pay attention to the fact that it needs to be choices that students are going to choose. Nutrition education, we've just, and Cindy Gilmore, who's going to be coming up next, has worked with this in terms of revising our nutrition education program. And it's been kind of admittedly a little bit hit and missed in the past, and so we wanted to make sure that we had a much more effective and better-designed program in place. And so our goal is to have five hours of nutrition education in the grades per year. Physical activities is one of the subcommittees that I've been involved in, and we targeted four different areas that we wanted to try to make some change in. One is to provide consistent pre- and post-fitness education testing. And I think at our last board meeting, you had an example, an opportunity to kind of see how that works with some of the heart monitoring that we're doing and adding technology to what we're doing in terms of measurement for the students. We've had fitness testing in the past, but again, it hasn't been very consistent, and that's one of the things that we wanted to make sure, that we have very consistent pre- and post-fitness testing for our students in grades four through 12. And then they would be able to take that information with them. Of course, it's confidential information, but they would be able to access their own fitness information, and parents would be able to access that as well, and see their own growth from year to year. And we think that's going to be very important. Also, providing opportunities, and I think maybe some of you may have heard, we have a large number of elementary schools, for instance, that have running clubs this year. Even some of our principals are doing running clubs with the students, and so we have a lot of opportunities that are developing for students to participate in before-and-after-school wellness activities, as well as family fitness education. One of the things that perhaps you've heard a little bit about every now and then is trouble-free playground or playground model. It's a little bit of a change from what we've done in the past, but the primary difference is kind of two things. One is, we don't want students going out and standing, quote, "standing on the wall" during recess time, with recess being taken away from them when they need to be able to use recess for physical activity, for at least some movement. And secondly, we want to at least provide some structured opportunities, not that they're forced into structures, but some structured opportunities for them to actually get physical activity during recess. And so we've tried to organize some of that with a bit of a structure called trouble-free playground, or other models that would indicate opportunities for students to actually be involved in physical activities during that time. And we're making progress in those areas. As you can see, our goal will be to reach pre- and post-fitness in 100% of our schools, and implementation of these activities in all of our schools. That's the end of the first part of the presentation. Just want to ask if you have any questions on those things that have been covered so far.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions from anyone?
Mr. Martin, I'd just like to ask you to give to the board just the overview document, again, please, on the trouble-free playgrounds, just so we can re-acclimate ourselves with that.
Certainly could do that.
Something that I hear a lot about, and would just like to make sure that we review what those objectives are.
Yes, it certainly could do that. We, a couple of years ago, we did not do that this year, and I'm not sure we did that last year, but we did about three years of training for PE teachers and for principals in terms of implementation of it. We have actually a lot of flexibility in terms of how it's implemented, but the goals are to teach opportunities for kids to have cooperative games, maybe not as much competitive games, but cooperative games, and to increase the level of physical activity. And I could certainly provide that document for you.
The other thing is, because I believe there are some ongoing misperceptions about that. Do we have all of that documentation and the goals, et cetera, out on the website?
I think we attempted to do that, but let me double-check. We certainly can make sure that it is there.
Yeah, if not, let's, please do so, so parents can have access.
Yeah, one of the things that we're trying to do, especially with principals and the PE teachers, is make sure that communication, because that's one of the things we know we need to be proactive in that communication about, what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. It is my privilege to highlight student health services and safety as well as employee wellness initiatives. School nursing has a rich and proud history in Olathe, and I have benefited greatly from the excellent work of my predecessors. When one considers the education setting with a focus on learning, it is likely there will not be the same familiarity with the role of a school nurse, including the need for a school nurse. As this first slide clarifies, school nurses not only assist some of the students who have identified health needs, they serve all students, supporting education through the protection and the promotion of health. And I want to acknowledge that a few of our school nurses joined us tonight to hear the presentation, so if they'd just at least raised their hand to be, they wanted to show their support to the Board of Ed for how you have supported school nurses. Part of the history of school nursing in our district is data collection, even prior to the assistance now provided via electronic record-keeping. However, state data for benchmarking has been lacking. But fortunately, in 2006 and '07, we had a much-needed change with a state survey that was conducted. 58% of Kansas school nurses participated. A national topic in school nursing is school nurse ratios. Currently, Kansas ranks 10th best in the nation with a ratio of one nurse to every 584 students. Another way of considering ratios is nurse-to-building. And Olathe, like other urban areas of Kansas, has a ratio of one to one. Non-urban areas of Kansas have a ratio of one nurse to three buildings. Additionally, in our district, we provide assistance to school nurses with special circumstances, namely those with large enrollments. Well, does having a full-time nurse for every building make a difference? This comparison was very exciting for me. In studying the first two lines of information on this slide, the percent of students that visit the health room and the percent that are returned to class, we can surmise that having a full-time nurse might lead more students to visit the health room, 83% versus 62% statewide. We can also conclude that increased usage should result in a greater percentile of students that can be successfully assisted with subsequent return to class. In summary, I believe these first two lines indicate that our nurses are being well-utilized, allowing educators to continue with classroom instruction. Most impressive was the difference in students with vision and hearing referrals that are completed prior to the end of the school year, 73% and 79% compared to 46% and 45% statewide, a task that occasionally requires many steps and much time. Lastly, it is not surprising that immunization compliance as well is improved with a full-time nurse on duty. In considering the big picture, it is also important to inform you of trends occurring in health services. This next slide compares enrollment increases with increases in certain health conditions. Whereas enrollment has increased 35% from the baseline year of '98-'99, students with physician orders to treat severe allergies has increased 739%, and those with type 1 diabetes by 258%. Continuing this discussion, current medical standards and technology have contributed to a change in the management of these conditions, requiring frequent blood sugar monitoring, up to five times per school day, and providing devices such as insulin pumps and rescue medications, though the administration of these rescue medications is not as easy as swallowing a pill. Instead, it requires a subcutaneous, intramuscular, or as in the case of severe seizures, a rectal route to deliver the life-saving medication. At the same time, another trend worth noting is the number of medications administered peaked around the year 2000, and has dropped by 2/3 of what it was at one time, though it has remained relatively stable the last three years. Longer-acting medications for the treatment of attention-deficit hyperactivity disorder have been the primary factor for this change. The bottom half of this slide points to the increased number of students in our population that lack access to health care, and tap into our Student Emergency Fund, which is funded solely through donated monies. When individuals lack access to health care, they also lack access to oral health care. I'm pleased to report that we are working on several initiatives to assist with access to oral health care throughout the district, especially at our Title I elementary schools. A most recent initiative not mentioned on this slide has been the partnering with 10 Olathe dental offices to serve students in need. Student safety is another focus of student health services. Accident trends are monitored annually, and playground injuries have consistently been the primary location for accidents in the elementary setting. Last year, we noticed a dramatic drop in the percent and number of elementary injuries that occur on the playground. We classify an injury as an accident that necessitates a visit to a physician or dentist, and/or results in a student missing a half or more day of school. The bottom half of this slide speaks to our readiness to respond to both injuries and sudden illnesses. All but three district buildings had four or more staff members with current certification in CPR AED, with the average being 23, 16, and 11 staff members with current certification at our senior high, junior high, and elementary buildings, respectively, at the end of last school year. Similar numbers are presented for first-day training. Current certification infers the employee has attended a class within the past two years. We now turn to the last focus of this presentation, that of employee wellness. Our formalized employee wellness program began in 1999, led by Arvela Spees, our Health Promotion Manager, who is in attendance tonight. So, Arvela, will you raise your hand, please, so they can see? The opportunity to provide program evaluation has been welcomed and studied. When evaluating wellness programs, experts suggest starting with a review of participation rates. You will note that three of the participation rates displayed on the current slide were based on self-report obtained during our Benefits Online enrollment. Secondly, experts tell us to evaluate overall satisfaction with your program. This same online survey reported only 1% that were not satisfied with our current programming. Participation in health risk appraisal is a very important component of wellness programs in order to help the individual know his or her particular risk, and also to provide the employer with aggregate data concerning risk. Over the years, we have learned that incentives definitely increase participation in health risk appraisals. Beginning in 2006, and you will note that right here on the slide, a health premium discount was given for participation. Employees not on the health plan were still able to earn points toward wellness prizes. This slide reports the percent of participation of all employees. Percentage is specific to employee health plan members with 78% last year. Thirdly, evaluations of employee wellness programs are encouraged to measure behavior change. The health risk appraisal utilized by the district measures 15 separate health risk areas that are listed at the bottom of this slide. Aggregate data provided from the health risk appraisals depict a positive change. The percent of employees at high risk, depicted by this top line, five or more risk areas, is decreasing, and the percent at low risk, with zero to two risk areas, is increasing. As the number of risk increase, so do health care costs. For example, in 2006, 2007, the average health care cost for employees with zero risk was around $1,900, as compared to employees with six-plus risk at over $8,500. Further, this analysis and interpretation of data guides the Wellness Department in determining where to focus to receive the most improvement in overall health and health care costs. Usually, as in our case, employees' interests match the risk prevalence, leading our district to a current focus on physical, increasing physical activity and decreasing body weight. Lastly, experts suggest wellness programs calculate return on investment. And as we improve and we become more consistent with our data collection, we hope to move into that final area of evaluation. We, at this time, would take questions from the second part of the presentation.
Cindy, I just realized that one nurse for 584 kids, I have nothing to complain about.
[laughing]
That's a lot, and you guys do a wonderful job. Any questions or comments? All right, thank you. Thank you, all you panelists. Dr. George, I believe you're going to present the next item as well?
That's correct.
Innovation process.
It's a pleasure to share this information with you. We've been working for some time on this issue of looking at innovation and how can an organization foster innovation and be more deliberate and intentional about creating more innovation and bringing that forward versus a passive stance and just allowing whatever happens to happen. And so, we got into the literature, we have been in contact with a number of organizations, and we have also spent some, we participated in a conference and picked up some information, and this evening, we'd like to share with you where we are in this process. The first question would be why innovation, and obviously, to secure great ideas so that we can do things better. It does also deal with cost containment and the issue of cost avoidance. But certainly, operational efficiencies and improved processes are also part of the reason for looking at innovation. Innovation, when you define it, there's a lot of different definitions, but essentially, it's the successful implementation of creative ideas within an organization. When you get into the literature and you begin to talk with people about innovation, you find that it often goes in two different directions. There's a climate component that's very, very big, and there's a process component. And we'll try to touch on both of those this evening. When you begin to look at the climate component, there are a number of characteristics that are associated with innovative organizations, such as encouraging employees and partners and suppliers to take an active role. And you can see these other things, welcoming new ideas and approaches, looking to the future to anticipate customers and future needs, and the list goes on. And we have these here for you, embracing new technology, having internal processes that support innovation, rewarding innovative ideas, and moving quickly. Those are some of the characteristics of certainly innovative organizations. Other climate pieces you find are the desire to create a risk-tolerant culture. Because when you get into innovation, there will be some failures. There will be some mistakes that happen. And so, there has to be a culture that's willing to tolerate some mistakes, some things that don't always work out. Certainly, other things that are involved are fostering a cross-functional team approach, incorporating innovation characteristics into candidate screening. And that involves some questions that can be asked of candidates in terms of their interest in looking at new ideas, et cetera. Reinforcing innovative behavior through performance expectations. In other words, making sure that people understand that innovation is an expectation and not just something that is nice if it happens. And providing monetary and non-monetary rewards and recognition. There are some barriers, however, to these cultural pieces. Sometimes, the culture's resistant. Sometimes, there's a lack of resources. And it doesn't have to be a lot of money, but there needs to be a little bit of seed money to support some of these things. There may be a lack of senior-level commitment in an organization. There may be a lack of a strategy to take ideas and move them to implementation on a wide scale. And there may be a lack of metrics to measure what an organization is doing and how well it's doing, how many pilots have been moved to full implementation, et cetera. So there's a role for metrics when you begin to look at the innovation area. There are some passion killers, and sometimes, people have great ideas and they come forward, and we hear responses like, "We've tried that before." "The board's not going to approve it." "The old way works best." "My plate's too full." You know, "It'll set a precedent." "The time is not quite right." "It's too expensive." We've all heard these things, and I probably said some of them myself at one time or another. But the point is that those can destroy the passion that others may have for a new idea, and we need to guard against those. Leadership behaviors that tend to encourage innovation are obviously the reward and recognition, a commitment on the part of leadership to support new ideas, teams that represent a diversity of skills, experiences, and backgrounds so we can bring and get more creative ideas when we begin to look at an issue. Resources, there has to be some time to work on these issues, and there has to be a little bit of seed money to make some things happen. It doesn't have to be a lot, but there usually has to be a little bit. There needs to be challenging work. People need to feel like they're challenged and they need some freedom to move. Once the project's been identified or the area's been identified, then they need some freedom to deal with the issue. One author said, "You need to have the freedom to figure out how to climb that mountain yourself." You don't necessarily get to choose the mountain, but once it's selected, then you need to be able to figure out how to climb it. Additional support, you know, if we respond to creative ideas with great idea, "Let's see what we can do." Super, fantastic, let's pilot the idea. That kind of an approach sends a whole different set of messages to those who might come forward with ideas in an organization. Process keys, now we're shifting a little bit from the cultural piece. But under the process piece, we need to make sure that suggestion programs are aligned with our overall improvement strategy. We need to create a strong sense of teamwork and sharing of information and ideas. Suggestion programs should be viewed not simply as a way to save money, but also as a way to improve the organization. And sometimes, there's what we call small innovations or incremental innovations, and there needs to be a lot of those, and then we also need to be looking at bigger innovations and then some really big blockbuster-type innovations if we can. And we need to express appreciation when people come forward with ideas or they participate. And we sometimes need to set some priorities and say, "We're looking for new ideas in these three or four or five areas," whatever it may be, so that people can dovetail suggestions and align them with the thrust of the organization. We need to make it easy for people to participate. We need to measure the innovations, and this gets back to the metrics. And we need to proactively seek those ideas. That's that intentionality piece, instead of just allowing what happens to happen, but deliberately cultivating those and trying to pull those out so that we can have the very best. And then we need to respond to ideas once they're offered, respond quickly, and within days, not months. And we need to track employee ideas and what happens to them. Some organizations are using online methods, some have toll-free numbers, many are working closely with their suppliers or partners or collaborators to make things happen. We looked at St. Luke's, and they have a Baldridge recipient, and obviously, they feel strongly about the Baldridge criteria. They do extensive survey work, focus groups, innovation group participation. They share a lot of information, and on their balance scorecard, when they have a yellow area, there's automatically a ninety-day action plan to correct that particular area and bring it back into the green. And a strong emphasis on people. St. Luke's has an idea bank, and they solicit ideas, and they screen those, and they recognize everybody who submits ideas, and they implement the most appropriate. And they try to recognize people, and they've got some things there. And probably, the most coveted recognition is parking. In the Plaza area, that is a premium, and being able to park close to the door you go into work would be appreciated. We looked at Premier, Premier is another Baldridge recipient, and they are a group purchasing organization. They solicit ideas, they refer those to a subject matter expert, they promptly respond, they screen those, and they implement the most appropriate, and they do recognize with a monetary award that is tied into their core values. We looked at UMB, and they do solicit ideas to address specific issues. They accept the suggestions, they screen them, and then they try to implement the most appropriate. We have over four thousand workers in our workforce, and I don't believe that we've fully tapped all of the idea potential of our workforce. And we'd like to be more intentional about our innovation as we go forward. Cantor, Harvard professor and author, said that there would be no innovation without someone, somewhere, pushing, trying to shape that idea and come up with a new product, a new work method, a new system to bring innovation about. And it does take a lot of work to make those things happen. Then there's this issue of breakthrough innovation, those big blockbusters. And whenever an organization is in crisis or is significantly outperforming the norm, that's a good time to begin to look at that breakthrough innovation. Three other times to do that is when additional efforts are producing just minimal or no gains. And certainly, if there's pushback, a lot of pushback, it needs to be looked at. And then if external conditions have changed so dramatically that the old methods are not working, then it's time to look at breakthrough innovation. Other process steps that we need to take a look at, asking ourselves what's working and what isn't working. Very simple, two questions. Do we have the right people, the right vision, the creative ideas, the influence, the resources, the competencies, and the information to move forward with something? Teams need freedom to pursue the objective once it's identified. They need to be diverse, they need lots of information. In fact, Cantor, in her research, found that one of the biggest impediments to innovation was the lack of information flowing throughout the organizations. There needs to be resources, and there needs to be a good match between team members and the project. More communication, innovation can bog down when there's insufficient efforts directed at communication. That communication, not only to get the idea, but also as the whole innovation is being developed, that helps with deployment later on, when people see what's being done. And then innovation must be presented in ways that they can be understood. And sometimes, that means a picture or a photograph or a prototype, because often, a picture's worth a thousand words or more. When you look at think tanks, they're heavy on research, they utilize subject matter experts, extensive use of data, surveys, and information. And then they narrow the options down to one or two areas and pursue those in more detail and refine them for consideration. One author suggested that organizations ought to be looking at an innovation pyramid, where they have a lot of incremental innovations going on all the time. They have some mid-range changes that they're looking at and working with, and then a few of those big blockbuster ideas, breakthrough innovations at the top. Next steps, as we begin to think about where we are and where we'd like to go with this, are to emphasizing that innovation is an expectation, emphasizing the importance of innovation in words in our publication, allocating resources, setting up ways to collect the information from our employee base, working with a group to screen these ideas, and then promptly responding and recognizing people who have these ideas. The group could meet perhaps every two weeks or whatever the appropriate time is. Then a cross-functional team would work on those, and we need to track the information so we know where we are and we've got good data on what's going on in the innovative area. Innovation might be added to our leadership standards. We could establish a rollout date, we could communicate that through our publications, we could identify areas where we're looking for innovative ideas, and we could link innovation to performance reviews, follow-up surveys, et cetera, and clarify that working with partners and suppliers is an expectation, not just acceptable. And then we could begin to tap into our workforce on selected areas, work to encourage those incremental improvements, because sometimes, we kind of act like those incremental improvements are not a big deal. But if you think about the tortoise and the hare, those incremental improvements are important. If you think about Toyota, incremental improvements are very important. We need to look for dramatic ideas when conditions are suitable. We need to consider that think-tank, action-learning, task-force approach on selected projects that seem to be appropriate for that and lend themselves to that approach. Then, Dr. Fries from KU indicated that leadership has to support these ideas, and leadership has to provide opportunities for passionate champions to share their ideas, and the innovation must be perceived to meet a need by the stakeholders for it to be adopted. Then, when you get to deploying those innovation system-wide, that brings us back to Joel Barker and this whole business of change. And he has ten guidelines for change, and there obviously has to be a perceived advantage, compatibility, simplicity, you can read the list, but there have to be those things to make sure that innovation goes forward. This is kind of where we are in the research. We want to provide you with a status report of what we've been doing and where we are. We think we've got some things that we could begin to move forward with, but wanted to share that with you and be happy to respond to questions you may have.
I know that Dr. All would like to make some comments related to this, and then we can open it up for comments or questions.
I just wanted to comment that I asked Dr. George to focus some of his time to pull together some of the research because the board has a strategic direction to. The board has a strategic direction to encourage and foster innovation. And I think Olathe is known as being an innovative school district. I think we are probably a leader out there in innovation in relationship to other school districts, but it's probably an area that we can continue to maximize, that we probably haven't reached our full potential there. And trying to be intentional about putting the processes in place, encouraging and supporting the culture more than we have, which I think has been good, but actually put some processes in place that would further this along our goals. So, I appreciate the work he's done on this. This is sort of to give you the big picture. We'll be back, I think, in a month or two on innovation as one of your strategic planning areas to talk about some specifics there, but wanted you to have sort of the background of some of our thinking.
Board member, questions or comments? Mr. Pollan?
Just a quick question, in a climate of, or an institutional setting such as we are involved in here, you can either answer this tonight or prepare it later, but what would a climate of, quote, "recognition" look like?
A climate of recognition is something that we've talked a little bit about, and it's a little bit of a balancing act because you have to find something that is perceived by the recipient as appropriate and reflects commitment of the organization and dignifies the recipient. And at the same time, you have to figure out what that is. In some cases, it may be a monetary thing, but many organizations are finding that monetary things don't always work. And sometimes, it's simply a very nice letter and recognition. Sometimes, it's a meal, a banquet, or something like that. But there needs to be some kind of recognition, but it doesn't always have to be monetary. And if you go down that monetary road, then there's a lot of other questions that develop about, well, how do we figure out what's a hundred-dollar innovation idea and a two-hundred-dollar and a thousand-dollar? And you begin to get into that issue, and that can be kind of a difficult issue to get into in an organization like a school district. So, I think we have to explore that area a little bit further about what is appropriate and what is perceived as an appropriate and a dignified recognition on the part of the people who might be suggesting innovative ideas.
Dr. George, my question relates to, as we read through these materials, this seemed to be more geared towards internally, employees, those who work in the district. Do we include parent input, patron input in this particular process, or is that a separate matter? Because all you gotta do is get elected to one of these positions, you get all kinds of advice about what things we should do different.
It should be, an innovation process should be one that accepts both internal and external ideas. And that's the reason I had the pieces in here about working with suppliers, partners, collaborators, vendors, et cetera. And some organizations are using toll-free numbers so that people out there that buy a product can call and say, "Can you make this adjustment or add this gizmo or whatever to this whatever so that it'll meet my needs?" And they also have email to accept ideas. And so, certainly, organizations are willing to accept ideas from the end user, and we should be too.
Okay, good. Anyone else?
I think it's important, when we're talking about innovation, that we almost are required to distinguish what area of innovation that we're talking about. And I'm thinking in terms of staff and staff recognition, in terms of working with our vendors, in terms of what's happening in the classroom. Because frequently, when we talk about innovation in the classroom, there's some reluctance on the part of parents and of the community maybe to be accepting of that innovation because we've had some maybe unfavorable experiences in the past. So I think it's important for us, as we go along, to be specific when we need to be, when we're talking about innovation.
Right.
And I think the district has tried to be very careful about those innovations by using pilots, and asking lots of questions before we move forward, and to make sure that when we roll something out, it is successful, and that we don't have failures or things that don't go well. And, you know, so I think, point's well taken, yes. Other comments?
All right, Dr. George, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to the follow-up. Now it's time to flip. Section 2.03, Families Learning in Partnership. Dr. Banikowski's going to introduce this topic for us.
Good evening. It is very nice to be here to be able to talk with you this evening about FLIP, Families Learning in Partnership. And we're just going to give you a little bit of an update on this particular program, and hopefully you'll be flipping about the excitement we have related to this program. You know, this program really fits a lot with what Dr. George just talked about in this innovation. It began back in 1997, and through the generosity of R. Osborne at that time, to kind of have a matching grant to get us started on this particular project. It was innovative, and it's probably also an example of long-term sustained innovation, that as you can tell, it is now 2008, and we're still talking about the FLIP program. And so it really models that, and probably because it strategically fit with the goals that we were working on as a district, and helping students to be able to read better and to write better, and certainly that's part of our strategic initiative. It was designed to promote parent involvement and leadership, and so also aligns with other board goals that we currently have through the Board of Education. Our focus is on reading and literacy, and really focuses on the younger children, kindergarten through third grade. We're very fortunate tonight, you're going to have an opportunity to kind of sit back and enjoy a slideshow. And you know, when people invite you over to a slideshow, it really is fun. We have picked out the best of the slideshow and some pictures. And Mary Jo Fox, who was previously an IRT in our district, and was very much a leader in that particular area, she is now our Title I Reading and Math Coordinator, and works with our K-6 Reading and Writing and Language Arts Program. And I think you will hear, as Mary Jo kind of walks us through our pictorial slideshow, the excitement and how wonderful this particular program has been. So I'm going to turn it over to Mary Jo.
Great. What I'd like to do is share with you the faces of FLIP, and how its impacts our student learning. Thank you. These are our parents, our students, our presenters, who wish they were here tonight, but instead they're on the road presenting FLIP. Our teachers, our principals. FLIP takes place twice a year at all of our Title I schools, and some non-Title I schools, like Black Bob, that's an ELL site. Like all good programs, it gets kicked off with, by pizza that's served by the presenters. And as you can see, it gets things off to a great start. Quickly, though, families then go and transition and move down to the sessions, where we've got sessions offered for our kindergarten students, first grade, a combination of our second and third grade students, and then what we call our Flying High, a session that's focusing on our high-achieving kindergarten through third-grade learners. Now, as soon as those servers take off those serving gloves, they quickly are serving up research-based strategies that are aligned with our school improvement plan. And you can see from the looks on the families, that they are enjoying getting involved in these activities. What the theory is, is that first the presenters go and model the strategies, and then the families get a chance to go and try them out. After they try them out, they are comfortable with them, so then they can go and use them at home. Last semester, we went and we focused on vocabulary. And when we're thinking about our different topics that we're going to focus on, we always go and look at what are the needs of our schools, what are our needs of our families. Now, no matter what our topic is, we always have our presenters modeling how to read aloud to students. Pat Edwards, who's a leader in the field of family literacy, what she reminds us of is, it's not good enough just to ask parents to read to their children, we've got to show them how it looks. We've got to give them some tools, so then they're successful, and then want to do it with their kids, and where it feels really comfortable. This semester, we've been focusing on writing. And with this, in our kindergarten, in our first-grade classes, we are sharing with parents the different stages of their child's writing. And this way, if they know what stage their child falls into, they can really celebrate that, and then go and encourage it by having more writing taking place at home. Our kindergarteners have had a lot of fun going and writing about their experiences with loose teeth. Our second and third grade and our high flyers were writing about that special person who brought them there that night. Our first graders wrote poems about their families. And at all of the different grade-level sessions, the families got a chance to engage in a dialogue journal. And this is a great vehicle where families can write to each other back and forth, and it's especially helpful for families where maybe a parent might be working evenings, that then they can have this communication going back and forth. At one of the sessions, a child started out writing in their journal, kind of saying, you know, that they had run out of clean clothes, and would the mom please wash clothes? The mom goes and reads over the journal, and then goes and responds back in writing, "I'll be happy to go and wash the clothes as soon as you take them out from under your bed." So you can see, there's a lot of fun and laughter that go on in these sessions. We want to provide our students with the different resources that they're going to need to be able to go and try out these strategies at home. And so all of our students always leave with great books by award-winning authors. We also, for example, this session, are providing our students with journals. We've also provided our kindergarten and first-grade students with the high-frequency words, and also some different writing resources. With all of these resources that we provide, though, the presenters always share how to use them, and the kids have the time to engage in it before they bring them home. Now, this semester, we have been especially lucky. We have had Kate Capps from the Olathe Public Library attend all of our sessions, and share with families the different opportunities that take place at the public library. She's also been able to share with them about our summer reading program at the library with Catch the Reading Bug. So we really feel great about that, with being able to connect the parents with a great resource. Just last semester alone, FLIP reached over 1,200 members of our community. It has really had an impact on the learning for our students, for our parents, for our families, and schools. And what I'd like to share with you is an email that I got from Brett Jaeger, who was the principal at Fairview the night that FLIP was at his school. "I want to thank you and your team for a fantastic FLIP night. The students and the families left our building having a positive experience and eager to write. As a building, we're focusing on writing, so this was a fabulous topic. Many of the things I heard as I wandered around were great for our staff to hear. I know events take great effort, but I want you to know how much I appreciate it. What a tremendous learning opportunity for our families and students. For me, it felt great to see that this session really hit the target. In Olathe, we're always looking to research. And according to Epstein, students at all grade levels do better academic work and have more positive school attitudes, higher aspirations, and other positive behaviors if they have parents who are aware, knowledgeable, encouraging, and involved. And I really believe that FLIP does help parents become aware, more knowledgeable, and involved. And with that, it really helps us meet those strategic goals that we're working so hard to achieve."
As we look at our final slide here, we just wanted to share a little bit about the future. We're constantly, for an innovation that's been around this long, but we're constantly tweaking. We're, look, this is a very high-impact program for the cost that it does, and I indicated up to you what the approximate cost is. That's all for the books, the pizza, the trainers, and staff members, which of course play double-dooey with the plastic gloves on first, and then they're teaching reading strategies. It's been a great program in that way. We're going to continue to always look for strategies to help our K-3 parents, because that beginning reading is so, so important. Certainly looking for avenues for developing knowledge for our parents, and as well as having them be involved, and certainly looking to be in partnership, because we can make a difference for students when we work in partnership with our parents, our families, our home, and our school, and it's very important. So we're excited to share with you just a quick little slideshow with you, pictures of our FLIP program, because we knew it's, first of all, it's a feel-good program, we're making a great difference and a positive impact for students. With that, we would entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, ladies. Questions or comments? Dr. Daniels?
I have a question. Do you track attendance at these?
Yes, we do.
Can you speak to that a little bit, please?
Yes. We have had a big jump in our attendance, because to me, this is really an important piece. We could have the most fabulous sessions, but if we don't get the families there, it really is not going to matter. One of the ways that we have, I think, had an impact with that is we have all of our Title I teachers, prior to the sessions, go around to each of the classrooms and show the kids the different books that they're going to be giving away that night, talk to the kids about it, talk it up about the great things, and that has been really successful. Some of the things that, you know, we are looking at as we're looking at our schools that might not have the, as high of a percentage of attendance as other schools, and trying to then figure out, both with talking with the principals and talking with some families, okay, what can we do to better reach you and to get you that information? A piece that has come out of it is having the request to have some sessions over the summer, and to then possibly go and provide them at the Center of Grace, where it's right where families are. So again, we keep trying to go and work right at that, Dr. Daniels, because that's the crux of it, is getting the right people there.
The other question I'll ask is, are interpreters available?
Yes. What we do for each of the sessions is we find out who, the families go and they sign up for it. And so then we go and we find out, get the number of students who are going to, who are our English language learners, or their parents are not speaking English, and based on that determines how many interpreters we get. We also have gotten signed interpreters for that, so we really are focusing on that.
Thank you very much. Another question. Go ahead.
Ms. Wu-Ham?
Mary Jo, once you have the opportunity to present this, do you find then the classroom teachers will support or extend that learning for students by sending additional information home? I know the exposure to parents and then the support, how does that work?
Yes. Well, this is one of the other pieces, that it's really important to us to not only share this information and to go and get the parents there, but for us also to get our teachers there. Because the present, the topics that we're talking about are ones that we are developing and working on in our school improvement plans. And so, you know, it does mesh up with that, but the more teachers that we can get there, two things happen. If a teacher's there, their students want to come. And then the second piece to that is, if our teachers hear these strategies, and again, it's just maybe talking about them in a little different way than what they've heard at a previous training, they are more likely then to be able to go and incorporate it, and then talk to the families that were also there, and check to see how things are going.
Okay, good. Thank you. I had a question about how this program is funded, because I believe that the original seed money that Mr. Osborne provided ran out a few years ago, so could you address that question, please?
Really, the majority of this program is now funded by the K-3 at-risk monies, which are provided by the state, that must be spent on things focused in this area. Certainly, there would be other needs for this funding, but for right now, we've made a priority for that, so as long as we have that funding, it doesn't have some other need as we look at it. But funding is a challenge in this particular area, because we're providing things such as pizza, and water. And so it certainly is a program, we would love to see some other funders step up and maybe be able to help support some of that. We do know that some of our non-Title I schools have also picked up this particular program using their building funds, just not using the district FLIP, so they've kind of, they've done their own, flipped in their own way at their school level.
And we are always happy to provide our training modules that we already have developed for different schools to go and use.
Thank you.
All right, ladies, thank you very much. Great program.
Come out and flip with us anytime.
It's time for our comfort break. Dr. George, we're going to defer your legislative report till afterwards, if that's okay. So we'll take a break for 15 minutes, and then have recognitions and awards, and then Well, I was going to call everything back to order, but it appears everybody's ready. Time for recognitions and awards. Laura Lee?
Thank you. We'd like to welcome all of our special guests and their families and friends tonight. And as I call your name, I'm going to ask you to please use the center aisle to come to the front of the room, so no one trips over any wires at the sides. We're going to begin with the Walnut Grove team tonight, because their principal needs to get back to an event at her school, so I'd like the Walnut Grove Elementary School Knowledge Master Team to come forward. Dusty Chevy, Ryan Dahl, Jackie Duel, Rachel Hannah, Max Langmac, Jadrian Salmons, Thomas Williams, and their coach, Linda Ives, and principal Lynn Ann Borchers. It's a very special team. Students from almost every state and several countries competed in the January Knowledge Master Open Competition for fifth and sixth-grade students. The teams of students use computers to answer 100 challenging questions from all curriculum areas, and scores are based on speed and accuracy. This team of seven students from Walnut Grove scored 767 out of 1,000 possible points, which made them first place in the state and 20th in the nation. So congratulations to the team. We'll get their picture taken, and then see if there's any family members here. Congratulations to the first-place team. Do we have some family members here? If so, we'd like you to stand and be recognized. Now for our business partners, I will ask Mr. Jim Smith, Director of Community Development, to assist with these recognitions. And our first is a very special guest for the Olathe District Schools Alumni Wall of Fame, former Governor John Anderson Jr. John Anderson Jr. graduated from Olathe High School in 1935. He attended Kansas State College of Agriculture and Applied Science, and later transferred to KU, graduating in 1943, and from KU Law School the following year. In 1946, he opened his own law practice in Olathe, but soon after, he entered politics by running for county attorney. He won that election and served as county attorney until 1953. He then ran for the Kansas Senate and held that office from 1952 to 1956. He served as Attorney General from 1956 to 1960, and became the governor of the state in 1961, and served until 1965. Governor Anderson and his family were the first occupants of Cedar Crest, which is the governor's residence in Topeka. After completing his term of office, he returned to Olathe to practice law and remained active in public service, serving as attorney for the Board of Healing Arts and the Kansas Turnpike Authority, and he was the director of the Citizens Conference on State Legislatures from 1965 to 1972. The Olathe District Schools Alumni Association is proud to introduce past Governor John Anderson Jr. as one of the first nine recipients of the Alumni's Wall of Fame. Please join us in honoring Governor John Anderson. Do you have any family members here? Thank you. Now, we'd like to recognize Olathe Lanes East and Mission Bowl in Olathe. Eric Maxwell, the Olathe Lanes East Manager, and Beverly O'Donnell of Mission Bowl of Olathe. And we'll also ask Mr. Jim Ador, our Director of Athletics and Activities, to come forward with them. Olathe Lanes East and West, now called Mission Bowl, began a partnership with our district three years ago to let young people learn how to bowl competitively. The first tryouts for 100 positions brought out 300 students. They've made the lanes available for practice, have brought in professionals to teach, and have helped Olathe and other Kansas districts have bowling added as a state-sanctioned sport so students can compete and find scholarship dollars. This year, they're again stepping up to the plate to renew their agreement for another five years. This has been an outstanding partnership for our students, which we can see by their level of success, with a state champion from Olathe Northwest in the men's division and a third-place finish for the women. Mission Bowl also was just named to the class of 2008 25 Under 25 Businesses, which is a recognition of successful entrepreneurs and small businesses. Please help us show our appreciation. I heard that that winning score was like 751 for three games. Now, we'll recognize the Olathe Sunrise Kiwanis Club, Wade Willard, President, and Stephanie Dansko from Central Elementary is here. We'll ask her to come up too, please. And other members of the Kiwanis Club. The Olathe Sunrise Kiwanis Club is a service club which was formed to benefit the Olathe community. Since 1984, they have offered college scholarships to Olathe seniors and organized programming and projects to benefit the Kansas School for the Deaf, Temporary Lodging for Families and Children, Mothers Hands, the Children's Miracle Network, Special Olympics, and many others. Tonight, we welcome Wade Willard, the current president, and other members as the Olathe Sunrise Kiwanis Club begins a partnership with Central Elementary School. With the Kiwanis dedication to service and Stephanie Dansko's ability to incorporate service with student needs, this will be a wonderful partnership connection. So congratulations and welcome. How old do you have to be to be a member? Thank you. Our next recognition is Tiger Rock Taekwondo, Josh Hartley, instructor-manager, and also Carrie Lane, Principal of Santa Fe Trail Junior High School, if she's here tonight. Josh Hartley is here. Good. Josh Hartley is a fourth-degree black belt with the International Taekwondo Alliance with certifications as a Taekwondo instructor, Corin Swords, ground escape, tactical stick, CDT's Know and Go 1 and 2, teen safe, training for life, and CPR basic first aid. So this is the guy you want to be your best friend. Tiger Rock Taekwondo offers many programs for both children and adults focusing on self-esteem, coordination, mental readiness, attention span, social skills, safety awareness, and self-discipline. They offer programs in personal safety protection for individuals and families. Tiger Rock will partner with Santa Fe Trail Junior High, and Principal Carrie Lane has many ideas for connecting Santa Fe's leadership program and building character values as well as personal safety for cheerleaders and drill team students and moms, football camp fitness activities, field trips, and others. So please welcome Tiger Rock as a new partner. Now, we'd like to recognize the Olathe Daughters of the American Revolution, American History Essay Contest winners, Emily Sluter, Rome Elementary, and Kristen Seacrest, Olathe North High School. With their principals, if they're here, Mr. Brian Low and Dr. Connie Hyne, and representatives from the DAR, Mrs. Marilyn Rokel, Chapter Regent, Mrs. Patty Charlesworth, Chapter DAR Good Citizen Chair and American History Co-Chair, and Mrs. Carolyn Romando, Chapter American History Co-Chair. The DAR sponsors two essay contests and one scholarship contest in our district each year, and tonight, we're honoring the winners of the American History Essay and the Good Citizen Scholarship Contest. Emily Slider is a fifth-grade student at Rome Elementary, and her winning essay on "I Spy: Espionage During the American Revolution" tells the story in first person of a young woman in Boston who agreed to spy for the Revolutionary Army. She says in her essay, "When I agreed to be a spy, I didn't realize how many scary situations I would be put into. I always had to write letters with invisible ink because if I didn't, I could possibly be hung by the British soldiers. It was a risky job, but I knew I had to do it." So congratulations to Emily. Kristen Seacrest, a senior at Olathe North High School, is receiving the Good Citizen Scholarship for her essay, "Our American Heritage and Our Responsibility for Preserving It." Kristen's essay is about how America is a melting pot of individual differences but has created a heritage of courage, freedoms, and ideas which we mustn't lose by being afraid to express ourselves in writing, reading, and speaking. So please join us in congratulating these outstanding students.
Kristen, on behalf of the Olathe Chapter Daughters of the American Revolution, we're very pleased to present you with this certificate and the DAR Good Citizen pin. The 13 stars around the outside of the pin represent the 13 original colonies in the United States. The blue enamel band identifies it with our society. The qualities of good character which we emphasize, dependability, service, leadership, and patriotism, are titles of the four books in the middle. And circling these is the Laurel brief of honor and behind them, the torch of understanding.
Kristen and Emily, do you have any family members here? Would you, family members stand, please? Thank you. Now, we'll call on Tony Bozarth, teacher at California Trail and cross-country coach at Olathe East, and the principals of the two schools, if they're here tonight, Dr. Tom Berry and Mr. Larry Katzif. Tony has been teaching in the Olathe School District since 1989, first helping to open Frontier Trail Junior High School, then he moved to California Trail when it opened. He has been coaching since 1984 and became the head cross-country coach at Olathe East when it opened in 1992. Tony has just been honored as the 2007 Midwest Coach of the Year for Girls' Cross Country by the National Federation of State High School Associations. He says this recognition of the team, which includes his assistants Glenn Daniels and Shanna Hicks, as well as the supportive administration, hard-working students, and the best parents anyone could ask for, is a shared recognition. Let's give him a big hand of congratulations. Do you have any family members here? Would they like to stand or wave their hands? Yeah, you won't forget that one soon. Thank you. And Connie V. Brock, I'm going to ask you to stay up here because of the next award. Connie is representing Olathe East tonight. Now, we're going to recognize Lee Hitchler, Olathe East Drama Teacher. Lee has been teaching drama in the Olathe School District for about 20 years, including the last 16 at Olathe East High School. During that time, in addition to running an outstanding program, she's taken her students on many tours to see professional theater in New York, as well as to the International Thespian Conference, and her shows have been performed at state and international thespian conferences. She's also served as a regional coach for the Educational Theater Association, as state director for Kansas Thespians, and adjunct professor at Avila University. In January, Lee became only the sixth teacher in the state ever to be inducted into the Kansas Thespians Hall of Fame. The award recognizes individuals who have dedicated themselves to the cause of theater education, as she has done for her students. Please help us to congratulate her on this lifetime recognition. Lee, do you have any fans or family here?
Of my husband.
Would you like to stand? And our last recognition is the CBIZ Health and Productivity Management Leadership Award, Mr. Jack Bastable, Senior Benefits Consultant and National Practice Leader for the CBIZ Health and Productivity Division, Dr. Lowell Gossey, Executive Director of Human Resources, Nancy Jerrick, Benefits Manager. Please come forward as I'm calling your names. Mrs. Cindy Gailmore, Health Services Director, Ms. Arvela Spees, Health Promotion Manager, and Mr. Larry Spotts, representing the Professional Council as President of the Olathe NEA. The district launched its innovative wellness program in 1999, which was unique among school districts at the time. The goal was twofold, to set a good example for students by promoting wellness in the adult employees of the district and to reduce health insurance costs by promoting healthier habits. The statistics that we've seen tonight tell the story of the program's success. At least 82% of the district's employees participated in some aspect of the program in 2007, and the health screenings with follow-up support are leading to improvements. High-risk conditions have dropped from 10% to 6%, and low-risk conditions have improved from 43% to 74%. Mr. Jack Bastable, the National Practice Leader for CBIZ's Health and Productivity Division, has been involved with the district's wellness program from the beginning, and tonight, he's here representing CBIZ to present the award to our district, and he has a couple remarks he wants to make.
For the past nine years, I've been observing the, what really, to me, has been a case study in innovation for the district and the support of their health and wellness of the faculty and staff. And so in recognizing that leadership, we just want to cite a couple of examples of that. When we think of leadership, we certainly recognize the innovation and the vision that started the program in 1999. That was a tremendous vision that the district has, has really led the way for many other school districts to recognize the importance of wellness for their faculty and staff. But most important, as a definition of leadership, is the momentum that you continue to keep as the program continues to advance and grow and develop. And so I think that, to me, is a true definition of leadership. So really applaud that. And then the significant collaboration that only happens, good things happen together as you really exemplify. So I would say, right now, the Olathe District Tools is clearly leading in this area for its faculty and staff in the greater Kansas City community as a result of the collaboration of yourselves and many, many others that have been involved with the district. So we really congratulate you and really appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Lee, and congratulations to everyone who has recognized tonight with their award. It's that time in our agenda for public comments. At each regular meeting, the board reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room directly to my right and state your name and address. The clerk has advised me that no one has signed up prior to the meeting for public comments, so we'll open the floor at this time. Anyone who wishes to speak to the board at public comments. All right, seeing none, we'll consider the public comments section closed, and we'll go back to our remainder of our agenda. Dr. George, I believe we are going to receive your final report, 2.04, related to the legislative update.
Thank you. Happy to share with you kind of what's been going on in the legislature. Probably the big thing that has taken a great deal of time and attention is obviously the sunflower energy situation, and I think a bill is on the way to the governor today and probably a veto following that, and so we'll go into Chapter 2 on that story. But we'll spend some time taking a look at what's going on with respect to the issue of school legislation. And we'll take a look, first of all, here at the bills that have passed the Senate. First one I want to comment on is Senate Bill 327. This is the energy bill, and it has voluntary guidelines in it for school district energy efficiency. Senate Bill 515 and House Bill 2711, which you don't see up here, started through the process, and they had some mandates in there and a lot of problems with those, and we testified on those bills. And by working with one of our legislators, particularly Representative Olson, we were able to get those into a voluntary situation, and so now we are working with some voluntary guidelines. Senate Bill 399 involves compulsory attendance at the kindergarten level. There were issues across the state where students would enroll and they would kind of come and go, and it was a challenge, and so there's been a bill introduced that if a child enrolls in kindergarten, there's an expectation that the compulsory attendance laws apply. That's passed the Senate. It'll go to the House now for consideration, and there are some exemptions for religious and other reasons. Senate Bill 404 is a math-science academy, and they had to do some cleanup legislation for out-of-state students, and then there was a tuition question. If we have students who participate in that, the local district gets to pay their fees, which is the same as the base amount per pupil if they attend there. If they're an out-of-state student, then they have to pay the regular tuition, whatever that would be determined to be, and it probably amount significantly higher. In the case of- In the case of 407, there had been a pilot pre-K program that had been started in the state of Kansas, and this simply transfers the authority of that program from SRS over to the Kansas State Department of Education, Kansas Board of Education. Senate Bill 420, there was several statutes that deal with this issue of continuing contract laws, and dates, and languages, and so on and so forth, and timelines, and it was, the Senate believed that this one could be deleted, so it was deleted. There are still other statutes there that cover the same thing, so that's the reason for that one. Senate Bill 421, this is one that we testified on, in fact, today. This would allow 10th graders who don't have an IEP to participate in dual-credit courses. Currently, only students who have an IEP in grades nine through 12, or 11th and 12th graders may participate in dual-credit programs, such as College Now. Senate Bill 421 would open that up to 10th graders, and I don't think we're going to have very many take it, because the, most of our sophomores aren't going to have met the prerequisites and will not have, in the case of some classes, they have to take the ACT test and score at a certain level in order to get into those classes, but it does, and it might, open up some educational opportunities for a few students across the state. Senate Bill 426 is dealing with disasters, and there's several of these floating through the legislature, and it's basically designed to protect a district's budget in the case of a disaster and loss of students and so forth. And the disaster could happen in the summertime after the district has negotiated salaries and contracts, and issued contracts, and people have signed contracts, and then if a number of students move away, then you've got issues, such as the Greensburg situation. And then, there was also a companion, they also started naming the districts in the flooding in southeast Kansas. There's been a subcommittee working on this, and the concern is, maybe we shouldn't name specific districts, but come up with something more general. There was also a bill with the closing of the meat plant in Emporia and trying to address that issue, and how it might impact several districts in the Emporia area. Senate Bill 459 is something that we have been wanting. That is a second enrollment count, and it did pass the Senate. Unfortunately, it got amended on the Senate floor in a way that we're not pleased about. A senator from a different part of our state, let me back up, the original bill said that if you increased 25 students or 1% of your enrollment, you could qualify for a second enrollment count on February 20th. What happened in the amendment was that the 25, the fact that it had to be 1%, and 1% of 26,500 students is quite a few students. They also pushed out the implementation date a year and made it subject to appropriations. So, we may have a second count date if it passes the House, but it's not quite the way we wanted it. I have talked with some of the senators, and they are in conversations with some of the House members, so maybe this thing will get sorted out, but that's where that stands right now. Senate Bill 470 is a school safety act. You may recall that there was a bill passed last year in which students who perhaps brought a gun to school would have their driver's license suspended. And that particular bill puts school officials in a situation of violating either federal law or state law. This bill is designed to help clear that up, and so, that's the purpose of that particular law. 492 started out as a bill that involved the issuance or the reissuance of teacher licenses, and then it got amended, and they tacked on an obscenity piece. And in order to have an affirmative defense, materials have to be approved by the board, and so, that's that particular bill. It did pass the Senate. Don't know what may happen on the House side. Senate Bill 507 creates a Math Engineering Technology and Science Council to continue to monitor math, science, technology, education in the state of Kansas, look for ways to enhance that, find scholarships, et cetera, to support that whole initiative, because it is a very important initiative, and that we, excuse me, there was a movement to add a school board member to that council, because there was none on that council as the legislation was originally written, and that particular piece of legislation, that amendment was successful, and so, there will be a school board member on that council, assuming the same bill passes the House. 527 deals with expanding the eligibility for parent education, parents as teachers, and early head start services. Right now, there's no additional funding tied to that. It simply opens up the number of parents that can be served. Senate Bill 531 provides for a $59 increase in the fourth year of the school finance plan. I don't like to use the term "fourth year." I feel like a rolling two-year average or something like that's better, but they wanted to have, they used the term "fourth year." $59 is a start. We should be, look at it as a floor. It's about 1.3%. It's far lower than the rate of inflation, but that's where we are right now. And I talked with one senator today, and they indicated there might be something more on down the road, but it was, they needed to see where the, how the money was going to kind of shake out. In fact, most funding decisions are being put off until omnibus, and I'll get to that in just a minute. 2734 is a school consolidation bill, and it just allows very small districts to consolidate and maintain their separate budget authorities and combine those, because as you combine small districts, the amount of state aid you get goes down, and that's because of that low enrollment waiting. It's kind of a complicated thing to go through in a board meeting here, but this would allow them to hang on to some budget authority for up between two and four years, depending on the size and the amount of consolidation that takes place. And it's a way to try to encourage some consolidation of some of the smallest districts in the state. 2758 adds cyberbullying to the basic bullying bill that passed in the last session of the legislature, and it also makes it illegal or inappropriate to use any school district technology to participate in bullying, such as a computer or whatever. 2816 deals with reporting those school safety violations, and it's very similar to Senate Bill 470. Then, 2798 deals with the using BOTA funds for, and it has a definition of a school building in it, and this is a complicated one, because we kind of picked up some things and started doing a little more digging, and we're finding that there was an interpretation that we had received that indicated that if it's not an accredited school, you couldn't apply to BOTA. We're now hearing a different interpretation on that. Had a conference call the other day. We're seeking to get that clarified in writing and get that cleaned up so that we can move forward with that. The 2828 is designed to have uniform accounting. We think we have uniform accounting. The Division of Administration sets the guidelines for schools. There are workshops conducted for school board clerks in the state of Kansas. Dale Dennis, in the Finance Division, conducts workshops for school officials all across the state every year, very detailed. They put out manuals, et cetera, but there's a desire, or there's a belief, that somehow or another, there's not uniform accounting, and so, this is a desire to try to bring that and get that cleaned up even more so, and so, we'll see what happens with it. It is in the House, and we'll go see what happens. 2842 and 2874 are bills that we testified on. The ABCTE bill would allow a person to become a teacher by taking a multiple-choice test, and you do not have to do student teaching. We testified against that. 2874 would allow co-ops and service centers to get involved in the business of trying to address the teacher shortage situation by certifying people. We have some questions about that, obviously, and we have very good relationships with the universities, but there is a teacher shortage problem in the state, particularly in other parts of the state, and it's, a number of classrooms don't have appropriately certified regular teachers there. There may be long-term subs or whatever. 2859 deals with the consolidation of funds. A hearing was held on that, and right now, it's still in committee and hasn't moved out. 2888 is a bill on health insurance. Right now, school districts can participate in the state health insurance program if they have over 70% participation, but if they drop below 70% participation, they have to drop out of that program. This bill would allow a district, if it dropped below, say it went to 69% or 68% participation, they could still be a part of the state health insurance program. Finally, on the funding side. The governor had rolled in some of the gambling money into her budget. The courts have not ruled about the constitutionality of that, and that we probably won't have a decision until, last I've heard, like, May 14th, which will be after the legislature adjourns. And so, some of the budget committees have been asked to take that money out of those budgets and figure out what we have to do. The other issue is that the stimulus package that passed Congress will cost the state about $80 million, because the state tax code is linked to the federal tax code, and as there are some tax credits for businesses in there, that will reduce revenue for the state of Kansas unless we decouple, and decoupling will not be popular in an election year. And so, there's over $160 million that either isn't there, or is not, we're not sure it's going to be there, and so, that's the reason most decisions are being put off to omnibus. The other piece is that the consensus estimating groups will meet in April to do budget projections. In December and January, state revenues were down below projections. In February, they went up. We don't know what's going to happen in March yet. The one thing that has been consistent through this fiscal, or through this year since July is that personal income is up, corporate income taxes are up, sales taxes have been down almost every month. It appears that people are being paid, and companies are making money, and they're paying their taxes. They're buying gasoline, they're paying their mortgages, but they're not spending it a lot on things that they don't have to, for which sales tax would be generated. Cars, for instance, they tell me that are not moving real rapidly. That's a height, that generates a lot of sales tax, and so, that is a concern. Now, that's also a reason they're putting these decisions off. Early this morning, the, one of the education committees, an education budget committee met about 7:00 in the State House, and almost all the funding decisions are being moved to omnibus to see what the economy looks like when we get out to early May, late April, early May, before they make many more commitments. So, that's kind of where we are at this point. Be happy to try to respond to questions.
Mr. Churchman?
I have a question for Mr. Deener. On the BOTA clarification that we're seeking, does that give us the ability hypothetically to seek any BOTA authorization in arrears, maybe for a facility that we had not deemed to be open to that?
We have not asked that question. We can pursue that. The reality of that would be that the implications would be additional mill levy implications on our local taxpayers at a time when probably that's going to be one of the biggest discussions in our budget development this coming summer, as far as the, obviously, operating revenue is a big issue, but the mill levy implications with bond interest increasing like we've anticipated is going to be an issue we need to deal with, too. So, even if it was allowed, whether or not we'd want to entertain that, mill levy implications at this time would be something we'd have to consider.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I just would like to know if indeed that latitude exists, and it's not so much necessarily for this year, but just for reference or flexibility in planning that type of thing. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. George.
Thank you.
Moving on to our consent agenda. We have 12 items on the consent agenda tonight. Ms. Ashley has indicated she has two items, 5.09 and 5.10, for which she would like to have acted on separately, so we'll pull those off the consent agenda, and then she wishes to excuse herself while we deal with those two issues. Is there anything else that we need to address separately? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve it as presented, minus 5.09 and 5.10.
Mr. Gilmour, I move to approve consent agenda items as listed, with the exception of 5.09 and 5.10.
Second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmour?
Yes. And that motion passes. Please note for the record that Ms. Ashley has left the room, left the meeting, so we deal with 5.09 and 5.10. Is there any discussion or questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve, please.
Mr. Gilmour, I move to approve consent agenda items 5.09 and 5.10, as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mrs. Carpenter?
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmour?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
That motion passes. Moving on to action regarding bids, contracts, and agreements. We have five items in our agenda to take action on. Is there any questions, comments, or need to hear any presentation on any one of these If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve them as presented, please.
Mr. Gilmour, I move to approve bids, contracts, and agreements as listed.
Second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmour?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
And that motion passes. 7.01 and our other action items. First item is boundaries for Woodland Elementary School. Dr. Berry, are you going to introduce this topic for us? Nothing in particular to introduce? Okay. Just making sure. We've got some recommendations from staff, from the administration, in our agenda, so I guess I'll open the floor for any questions or comments. Mrs. Wilhelm, you're looking at me like you want to comment.
Well, I do. In the additional administrative content, there were some recommendations. I personally feel like there's not enough information that was given to this date in the recommendations. One would be the Olathe North as a feeder pattern, what would be the implications for that in the future, as far as future enrollment. I think there's some pieces on cost of operations and some statistics on boundary growth that still are not available for me personally.
Okay.
So, I would like to at least recommend that we postpone it for a month while that additional information is given to us.
Okay, Dr. Ross, I want to refer to you. Is that, how does that fit into our planning process?
Well, I think there's a couple of steps here. One would be to set the boundary for Woodland, which was the action that we need tonight. And then, secondly, the action about the feeder pattern for the junior high for Woodland Elementary School, I think can be delayed. Whether delaying it a month may be problematic for enrollment purposes if you were intending, you know, depending on the outcome of that. That's why that other option was presented there. The high school feeder pattern, right now, currently, that high school feeder pattern is Olathe Northwest, and that has not been part of any discussion in the public, and I don't think it was part of any discussion. I don't think it was part of any discussion going out there in the boundary groups that we had earlier. So, that's a new discussion that I think would take some time, and I think we do have some time to deal with it, but I don't know that we have the time to deal with that and get community input on making that change.
Okay, and I would want to hear from other board members tonight if they're currently, their current reflections, if necessary.
I might want to check with Dr. Berry, Mike Ackred, about that. Yeah. Well, it would sound to me as if then that there would be incomplete information for you, Linda, to make a decision, and I would say then that I would be willing to postpone a decision on the feeder pattern to gain more information, as you have requested.
My concern is that what I'm hearing, Dr. All, say, in that in making a decision, if that decision needs to be made tonight for preparation for the following year, then that discussion needs to stay open.
Mr. Gilmore, not to regress from that important topic, but I would also like to ask some questions about the two boundary options that exist for Woodland as well.
Okay.
And there'd be questions that I would direct towards Mr. Grollop initially. And it really pertains to option number one. And Dr. All and Dr. Berry, correct me if I'm mistaken here, but the way we've outlined this to our parents is that regardless of which option we choose here, that we've given a fairly broad right to parents to grandfather themselves into their current school, regardless of which way the option comes out here. So, I think that's just an affirmation in my mind that the process continues to listen and try and work with parents. But as I look at option number one, I guess the question that I have is it would take Meadow Lane down to two hundred and seventy-one students in two thousand and eight. And I know that that lower level enrollment is predicated on the potential for growth in the area throughout a number of years, up through two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven possibly. My concern being that, given the current housing market and some of the slowdowns in development, is two hundred and seventy-one students too low of a level that we'd want to set that school at?
I mean, our projections do account, the future projections do account for at least an estimated slowdown in numbers that would be similar for next year, for the two thousand and eight year, similar to two thousand and seven, and then growing, which are some of the forecasts that we are seeing from people such as the National HBA and other folks about what they expect the housing market to do.
Appreciate that. I would also welcome any perspective from the rest of the board. If we look at option number two, that would take Meadow Lane to three hundred and seventeen students, and essentially what it does is take that forty-five children neighborhood that's across Woodland to the west, out of the Woodland boundary, although I believe that if we were to adopt that, that we still are giving families in that neighborhood the right, as they look across the street, to go to Woodland, if they have the option to do that. So, I don't think it precludes anyone from going there. In fact, I know it doesn't. And really, the main basis for my questions is to make sure that we right-size Meadow Lane with appropriate number of students and don't have enrollment there at too low of a level.
Chris has done updates of enrollment numbers. You know, he does that on a regular basis, and as of last Friday, Meadow Lane has increased nine students from the start of the year, and we're seeing some decreases at some of our other schools throughout this year. But even with the slowdown, we are still seeing a little bit of growth as compared to some of the other elementaries at Meadow Lane. Again, that doesn't solve all that because he has most of that built in, but we are at least still seeing some increase out there.
Do we have a minimum level that we like to set for our elementary schools that we think when we go below that, it's problematic?
I don't know that we have a, they're looking at me. I don't know that we have a minimum level for a school that has been as large as Meadow Lane, but we've brought, these schools expand low and high that are on the edge of these high-growth areas. So, it's not unusual to have a school drop under its capacity when a new school has opened up and taken part of their boundary away. That would not be unusual. I think the key here is, is it projected to grow and fill back up, and I think we're pretty confident that that's going to happen. If this were the flat utilization of that school, then I'd say it's probably lower than it needs to be, but that's not where it's going to go to the future. And part of this is gauging, how many different boundary changes do you want to make in the future? If you, you know, the larger you make Meadow Lane right now, let's say, the greater the chances you might have to make more in the future. So, it's a little bit lower than probably what we would like right now, yes, but I think Cedar Creek has been as low as two hundred and some kids, right under three hundred, and as high as almost seven hundred kids. It's been up and down, and these areas that are in these developed areas or newly developed areas, they just, they operate like that. I don't know what the board's tolerance is for that, but I mean, it's what it is.
Yeah, I think, just as I look at the numbers here, we're looking at, according to the projections, anywhere from a max in two thousand and ten of three sixty to four hundred and seven. So, just, or in that neighborhood, and we know that some people taking advantage of their ability to stay or go will impact that to a certain degree. I just want to make sure that from a diversity perspective and making sure that we're not minimizing any of the opportunities at the school, that we don't go too low.
I think that's where you've hit on it, Mr. Churchman. It's a good question. Probably a concern to a staff in terms of how small the school gets is, they want to make sure they maintain full-time staff members in all the specials, for example. If you have to go back and cut back because of the number of kids to part-time PE, part-time music, and so forth, that becomes harder to schedule in that elementary. So, it's real important that you maintain enough students, that you can have full-time special teachers, for sure.
Yeah, so I look at both these options, and I think they provide the community with all the flexibility one could want. I just want to make sure we get it right. Certainly, we only want to do this once, you know, we can, but it just concerns me seeing the numbers that it appears to be on the low side.
I want to, I appreciate your question because it's one of the things I looked at, but what speaks to me more, Mr. Churchman, is the issue of taking the residents west of Woodland and getting that done now versus trying to change it again a few years down the road when Meadow Lane may be overcrowded again, and I think that's where I weigh my decision on erring that way, if there is an erring to be done, to make that happen early on with the opening of the new school and only have to deal with it later if it was an unusual circumstance.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think both of these are good plans, so I'm not dead set on one versus the other. I just am concerned about the enrollment level.
Mrs. Wilhelm, I wanted to speak to your comment related to the feeder pattern question, and can we deal with that later, and I don't have any trouble myself with dealing with that in a future time, if we need some more information. But we do need to make the elementary decision tonight.
And I have, I will be very honest with you. I have mixed feelings about this. And in the year two thousand and four, the board at that time said that when PRT got to ninety-five percent, that we would make the decision to no longer grant transfers. And I think if I'm correct in looking at those statistics, we are at that ninety-five percent now. And so, the question always comes, when we're looking at what's best for students, do we look at our junior highs, and we look at a school that's at ninety-five or higher percent capacity? Where do we address the look of support for the programs, for teachers that are working within those schools? And we know that we look at relief. We don't know what the future will be as far as our housing growth is concerned, but I do think it's important for us to look at what junior high schools are within that area and how we are utilizing those schools, both financially, as far as programs that we're offering, as far as staff and students that we're supporting.
And just getting my view on that, I think Mrs. Wilhelm brings up some great points. You know, we had Kerry Lane come before the board here and speak to us and just outline a really awesome program of what's going on at Santa Fe Trail. This board and staff have been very aggressive in investing in that school. It's dramatically different than what it has maybe been at times in the past. Technologically, it's as advanced as any of our junior highs or other schools, and I think that as a member of the board, certainly as we look at diversity and equity for all the students and our support of that school, I believe that we need to address the fact that it's under capacity. A lot of good things that are going on there, and I just have a tremendous confidence that that school will be as high flyer of any school in this district, particularly any of our junior highs. And I think we need to send a message of support, and we have done that, so this is nothing new, but we need to continue to do that. And so, to me, that is a variable that needs to be evaluated here. So, as far as deferring the decision, I think it'd be important as a board that we define what that timeframe would be. I also think we need to be clear as a board, or that would be my desire, as to what does that future look like, because certainly the parents' input in the whole situation has been outstanding. I think they've handled it in a very professional manner. But I also think we, as a board, need to be, we need to be open and definitive as to what does later bring with it. I don't think that passions will change from tonight versus a year from now, or a month from now, or whatever, but as a school and district, I think Santa Fe Trail is absolutely a diamond, and the community will continue to see that.
I guess I'm uncomfortable with delaying a decision on feeder patterns for a year, but I would be willing, or a month or two, to review additional information. I would be, I don't see the benefit in putting it off for twelve calendar months, I guess, and I'm open to negotiating time. Would that be agreeable? I also recognize that Mr. Parker's not here tonight. Right. I know that that would be an important piece for him. He was on the board in two thousand and four, when we looked at the process and talked about the future of PRT and where we would get to that point. I also listened to Dr. George tonight, and he talked, when he talked about that action team that's part of that innovation, he talked about the right people, the vision, the creative ideas, the resources, the competencies. I heard that at our last board meeting from the leadership at Santa Fe Trail. And I think I personally have a lot of confidence in a school that I think has so many opportunities going forward. So, and it's part of our responsibility to make sure that we're supporting those opportunities for that junior high, as for all junior highs.
I think there's some value in maybe taking a shorter period of time to continue to evaluate this, and one of the things I would ask Mr. Grollop, and we've been very fortunate to continue to get updated growth and growth production information, but I would like to get the latest and greatest sheets for all of the junior highs. Certainly, there's, you know, the ones here that are under the spotlight, but if we could obtain some updated sheets for our book in the short term, please, on the junior highs, I think that would help us in our analysis here.
I would add to that, that I would also like updated sheets on the elementary schools as well, if we could. And, go ahead. I want to make, get a couple of things clarified. I'm trying to follow this a little bit. First of all, if we're talking about, let's just talk about feeder pattern. One of the issues that is time-sensitive right now is, we're holding on a request out of at least a couple of neighborhoods for PRT based on a board decision. Those are kids that won't be going to Woodland, okay, but do need to know where they go enrolled this month, okay, because they're on their way to junior high. So, I'm trying to figure out a way to separate this into a two-step issue, is that are you, and that's why the proposal was to delay the feeder pattern and move forward in kind of a status quo, to come back and focus on that issue, which, you know, does have community, the views of the community are pretty strong on that, and also would give us some time to showcase Santa Fe Trail, some of the things that we promised. So, I don't think that saying you can delay the feeder pattern for a month or two doesn't help the current sixth graders who have to know where they're going to go. So, as long as you recognize that and you keep that separate, we could come back, you know, in a couple of months, you know, two or three months, if you're talking about the sixth graders that go into oh-nine-ten year. But if you're talking about the sixth graders that go into oh-eight, oh-nine, they're not at Woodland. They were at Meadow Lane, and you're really only talking about the couple of neighborhoods that you referenced. When you have Woodland as an elementary school, you now have some students from Washington, the neighborhoods that you referenced from two thousand and four, plus neighborhoods that came from Meadow Lane that were never attached to Santa Fe Trail prior to that. That's where the complexity, I think, is going to come in from a community view.
So, if we
Sorry.
Let me walk through this to make sure I'm clear in my mind. If we move to accept one of these two options, and let's assume it's the one with the neighborhoods west of Woodland included in the boundary for Woodland Elementary, we take action to do just that, and we take no other action, what, does that, how does, that means everything's staying the way it is right now?
Then, then I would assume that we operate as we have been on the current sixth graders at the current Meadow Lane going forward for oh-eight, oh-nine, and I'm looking to make sure my staff are in agreement about what they think consistently they could manage or handle. And then, your decision on the feeder pattern for Woodland would, could be delayed because it would impact this year's fifth graders going into oh-eight, oh-nine, for sixth graders, I'm sorry, this year's fifth graders going into sixth grade in oh-eight, oh-nine, who would then be having a feeder pattern for oh-nine-ten. Am I saying that right?
I think so.
I'm looking at Mr. Pollan, trying to see, is he following me or not?
I'm following you. I guess I would, we've got two issues on the table. The one is the boundaries, and that really doesn't affect the feeder pattern.
No.
I'd just like, I'd just soon like to make a decision on that and then come back and discuss the feeder pattern.
That's fine.
That's where I was trying to get to.
That's fine.
I think we need to do that. Thank you, Mr. Pollan.
And Dr. All makes a good point, and that when we talk, we can't, we can't delay the feeder pattern a month or two, given the enrollment issue, which is something I hadn't, that wasn't at the top of my brain. So, we either make a decision now on both, or we make a decision just on the boundary, and we delay the feeder option, knowing that it would not be enacted for a year. Is that, okay, I just want to make sure.
Let's take the first issue.
I was going to say, I would move that we accept boundary WL one, and then after that, we come back and discuss the feeder pattern.
And Mr. Pollan, you're referring to the neighborhoods west of Woodland being included?
That's correct.
In my, WL one and two may be flipped in my documents. I want to make sure I got the right one.
Yeah, the neighborhoods west of Woodland would be included in Woodland's.
Just, Mr. Gilmore, if I just may ask a question. Dr. Berry, are we, do we have any concerns that that option would cause any kind of the staffing issues that you've
Dr. B behind me, in the second row, is indicating that, I mean, it's possible because we, as you know, last month, took time to look at staffing efficiencies and numbers and so forth to move part-time staff, so it's, but we don't have those exact numbers in terms of how many staff at this point. But again, on the basis that the smaller, the more efficient you want to be with staff, it'd be possible. So, the more numbers would be more likely to secure the staffing there.
The capacity of Woodland is, like Madison, what, close to six hundred? The capacity of Woodland is, like Madison, what, close to 600?
It's the same situation. I don't remember what-
So it's, we're not, we're not at risk of overcrowding Woodland. It's just a matter of whether the staff is sufficient, or what we might be temporarily at Meadow Lane. Is that, but in-
But with the projected 271, if 271 kids showed up, you'd have a full-time music and a full-time PE teacher? Okay.
You know, I just want to reaffirm, I don't have an issue with either Plan 1 or 2. No other inhibitions, other than I would, I guess, like to get a recommendation from staff, that is this a big enough concern to have partial staffing at the school for these areas? And I think it's also important to say that the 271 that's projected, I'm sure will be higher to some degree for people that will exercise their right to grandfather, and we just don't know what the magnitude of that is. And I agree with Mr. Gilmore's comments tonight. So I just want to make sure that we measure twice and cut once here.
My take of that is that that number, the students west of Woodland, would not be a big enough number, or a small enough number, to cause any different concerns, probably, than what we're already looking at. I also agree with the thought that it's probably, for the long term, it's good to bring that neighborhood in. Again, there might be some that want to transfer and stay at Meadow Lane, but for the long term, those people that can actually see the school almost from the neighborhood, it'd be good to bring them in. Of the couple parent contacts I've had from that area, both of them were just indicating they would like to go to Woodland and would pursue that through whatever means.
And so we've given them that latitude either way, right? Yeah.
Mr. Pollan made a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Any further discussion? Everyone clear on which we're voting on?
Number one.
But includes the ones with property west of Woodland. Okay. Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
So Dr. Berry and Dr. Manikowski, I would like to ask that we keep this on our radar screen, and would like to have some feedback to the board as these numbers become more material and we understand, just to make sure that we, I'd really like to know how it comes out from a staffing perspective and-
Definitely. And Dr. Donovan has been working diligently on the staffing at Woodland and the changing at Meadow Lane, so she'll keep a total eye on numbers and making the staffing pattern information. And Dr. Donovan, I didn't know if you had something to add.
I'd like to address the issue of the second question, because I've thought about this further, and this concept of delaying a final decision on feeder pattern, or changing the current feeder pattern for a year from now, or some extended time. I want to refer back to Mrs. Wilhelm's comments about 2000. I think that was the first boundary issue we ever dealt with as new board members, and I remember clearly discussing that when that, when PRT hit a certain level, all bets were off, and we were going back to the way it should be. Now, I know that's an emotional issue, and political issue, and all kinds of issue associated with that. But in the spirit of, I think, trying to move the ball forward here, I would like to offer this, that we consider the, maybe a hybrid position here of going ahead and the staff recommendation of having some time before we make a final decision on that. But I would like to say, if we do that, it would be my bias that we are going back to what we said we would do, that that is what's going to happen unless some other news and or event happens in the interim that says we shouldn't do that. That's my bias in this. And I don't mind waiting a year, or letting a special Suss Study Committee and all that kind of thing happen, but I think, you know, I want to go on the record saying it's my intention that it changes a year from now, unless we have some other news here that says we shouldn't do that.
I think, Mr. Gilmore, that I would agree with that, and I think we should be clear to the community and the parents that's coming.
Yes.
Not to speak for the board here, but they need to understand that and let that weigh in on the choices that they're going to make.
And I want Dr. All the opportunity to respond to this after we've discussed maybe a little more. Mr. Pollan?
I was going to say, there is a policy on the board that, you know, through, I don't know whose fault, but it's been neglected a little bit. I'd say that now that's come to the forefront, that basically, that'd be the policy that is established, like you said, either next year or the following year. But we set a definite guideline, and that if some, something, if they bring something to our attention that we should change that, then we can act on that. But I agree with you that it, that say, a year from now, that we should go ahead and enforce the policy that is currently on the books.
Dr. All, did you want to comment?
Point of, just, oh, we need some clarification here. Because the 2004 decision that we're operating on right now, kind of, okay? Is one decision, and that impacts several neighborhoods as of 2004. The Woodland boundary now, Woodland Elementary School, has some of those neighborhoods that were part of 2004, and neighborhoods that weren't part of that. So when you're talking about going forward, the decisions are for Woodland, do you then keep Woodland going one junior high or the other in its entirety, or do you split Woodland? Those are your, do you see what I'm talking-
There's two issues there.
There's two issues there. So to assume that we're only talking about 2004, this is bigger than 2004 in terms of the feeder pattern for this elementary school, and the number of families that this is going to impact. And that's why I would suggest some kind of boundary discussion that Dr. Berry would lead, that would include some of the representative individuals involved, as well as staff, to sort of educate on the issue, educate on what's really happening at Santa Fe Trail, get some additional information. Because I think there's more wrestling of this than what meets the eye in terms of the feeder pattern, much less the high school issue coming down the road. And right now, I could tell you, unless we make some other changes, Olathe North could not handle any more kids. It's our second-largest high school. And so the issue isn't getting more kids to Olathe North. The issue may be just how our neighbor, mix of neighborhoods are. But that's a whole different discussion that I'm not sure there is a viable option for. And so I just, this isn't, this isn't only about 2004.
And I understand that, and that's, in my initial comments, had to do with, there are some other pieces that have not been answered yet. And so in the information that we had to date, that was not clear. However, I don't want us to be lost with the commitment that we made to PRT about what capacity we would let that school get to. I know that we are projected to open another junior high. However, the housing market, there are several issues that are there we can't project, but we do have some realities there, and part of those realities include Santa Fe Trail, and also the enrollment that it's at PRT right now.
I think that the bigger reality for the long term is Santa Fe Trail. The short term at PRT, I did, Dr. Berry did tell me, we're 10 students fewer at PRT now than we were at September 20th. That's the impact of, that's the impact of the housing market there, we're not getting the fill-ins. One thing that a little bit of delay will happen, it'll give you more data, and it'll be a little closer. Because advantage then is, you're pushing one more year for PRT to be crowded here, keeping the current. Because it is, it reaches that capacity right now. But it does allow us to get better data, and then to determine what you want to do, and it allows us to have a little more time for Kerry to work on Santa Fe Trail. Because then your decision, what it is, should be a long-term decision going forward, and one that you don't have to change. So I'm supportive of that, in terms of doing what you think we should do. And it would be helpful for me if we could have the kinds of things you feel like you need to have addressed, as board members, to me, to, and Dr. Berry. In fact, you can send them directly to Dr. Berry if you want to, but if you send them to me, I'll give them to you. That we can come back and wrestle with some of this. Because the deeper we get into this, the more complex it is, and I feel like you deserve more information than what we've been able to give you right now.
So, Dr. All, then, the other question I have is, is it beneficial that we broaden the picture even, and really look at other junior highs that have emerging issues, and start to look at this in more of a bigger-picture view than just at the two schools that we're looking at?
The other issue that we're bringing back to you is Indian Trail, and it's under capacity, and the crowding at Chisholm. So this, on one hand, I'd hope to keep these separate and pace them, but they're going to come together right at the same time, because we really need to make an impact in that area by 2009, '10.
And then there's, with the ninth junior high, I'm just wondering if that somehow isn't bringing all these discussions together for maybe more of a bigger-picture view as to what needs to happen?
I agree. I understand what you're saying, yes. I agree. So those kinds of things, if you want to email, that would be helpful, and we'll try to structure a process that gets at those questions.
And then, I guess, to Mr. Gilmore and rest of the board, if this is indeed the direction we're going to go, I think I would like for us to be clear and set a time limit of no later than a year from now, or, you know, certainly not make it ambiguous that I wouldn't want it to be a year or two. I think that's too open-ended. I believe, in my mind, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, that we need to utilize the capacity we have in these outstanding schools.
I'm sensing consensus along those lines from everybody here. Is that, am I correct?
I'm still struggling with why we need a year to do it, as far as the timeframe, you know? What, why it can't be made in six months, so that people have plenty of time to live with it?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, you know, I-
I'm comfortable with that.
You know, because if we come to this time next year, now all of a sudden, we're going to have issues that we didn't think of, or something else, and people are still going to be up in the air. I'd rather see a time limit more like six weeks, six months.
For the Christmas break, let's say, let's have something done.
We'll have our enrollment numbers.
For Christmas, is that what you said?
Yeah. We'll have enrollment numbers from the fall, and that would be an appropriate time to-
I think, yeah, looking at Dr. Berry, I think, once we get the Woodland community, for example, established, get that school started, and then come back and do that in the fall, and get, and I think earlier the better, because we're going to have to face all of this, and not put it as late in the end, in case you do want the option to ask for more questions. So I agree with that, Mr. Pollan.
Good point. All right, so we don't have any other action to take then, tonight, related to that, but we've given you-
I just want to make clear, then, we're operating, just like we've been operating, as far as the neighborhoods are concerned, from 2004, one more year, and the rest of the neighborhoods that, they had always gone to PRT under the current plan, okay?
Okay. Good discussion. Thank you all for your input. 7.02 is our Board of Tax Appeal application for Woodland Elementary. Are there any questions on this item? Not will entertain a motion to approve, please.
Mr. Gilmore, I move to approve the application to the State Board of Tax Appeals for Woodland Elementary School as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashley?
Yes.
And that motion passes. 7.04 on student trip, Electra-Thon team to Great Bend, Kansas.
Mr. President, that's simply on here because it came in past the deadline, and so I've been putting those as separate action.
I move that we approve the student trip for Olathe Northwest Electra-Thon team.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
And that motion passes. 7.05, the Kansas Association of School Boards' appointments. Ms. Ashley has indicated to me she would be willing to serve on the Legislative Committee for 2008, so we're looking for a volunteer for the nominating committee. And don't everybody jump at once.
I believe I covered that for you, Mr. Gilmore, this year.
You did. You did, and I was hoping you'd do it again.
If you could, if you could refresh me on the general timeframe, I can't remember-
It's one Saturday morning in September, I believe it was.
In September. Oh, that's right, because I remember making a mad dash to Lawrence afterward. I would be happy to do that. Saturday games in September are usually in the evening, so I think we can probably work that out.
Great.
And there's two away games this year.
Would anyone like to take a stab at the motion to approve these volunteers?
Mr. President, I would move that we take action to appoint board members to serve on the KSB Legislative Committee. That would be Mrs. Ashley and myself to serve on the nominating committee for 2008.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. And that motion passes. Thank you, ladies, for volunteering to do that for us. 7.06, a setting a special meeting date and time with the Olathe City Council. We have Tuesday, May 13th, at 6:00 p.m. And where are we doing that?
At the Bell Cultural Event.
Oh, at the Culture Event Center? Oh, yes, okay. It's in our electronic agenda here. We'll need a motion to set that special meeting date.
Mr. Gilmore, I move to set a special meeting date of Tuesday, May 13th, 2008, at 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of a joint meeting with the Olathe City Council.
Mrs. Carpenter, do we need to include the location in that?
Do, and I didn't get that on the working agenda, I'm sorry.
At the Bell Cultural Center on 2000 Pioneer Boulevard, Olathe, Kansas.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Pollan. Mrs. Carpenter.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Section 8, dealing with future action items, I'll ask board members, are there any items in the future action item list that you wish to have further, more information, or potential discussion now, or questions now? And Dr. All has made me aware that 8.04, related to transportation variances, Mary Lou Coyne and Gary Deener are here to answer any questions, or maybe even give us a brief synopsis about that. We may want that now, or do you want to have a separate presentation item on that later? That's something we don't visit on a regular basis, so.
Mr. Gilmore, I'd like to talk about 8.01, republishing the General and Special Education Fund budget for 2007, 2008, and also 8.05, international language update.
All right.
And 8.04 is related to removing the variance for that small group of families at Sunnyside. Is that correct? Okay. Because there is now sidewalk for those children to walk safely.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You got it. Okay, Mr. Churchman, let's go to 8.01 on republishing the General and Special Education Fund budgets.
I just want to reaffirm my understanding of this to Mr. Deener. First off, I think this is a great proactive move on part of staff, so I compliment him for that. And my understanding of this is, it potentially affords us incremental special education funding of approximately $1.3 million. That's still set to be decided, and the magical cutoff for having to republish is approximately $1.4 million. So I personally think this is a prudent thing to do, and protects us, and in the event that this money does come in near that magical cutoff.
Yes, once again, correct, uh-huh.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deener.
And also, excuse me, it is not mill levy implicating in any way.
Correct.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, where is that additional money coming from?
At the beginning of the year, Kansas State Department of Education has to make recommendations and projections for how much special education is going to cost across the district, and a budget is created for that amount. If it turns out that not all school districts hire the anticipated number of teachers, paras that they thought, and the reimbursement amount then is set at a level that does not utilize all the funds that were budgeted, then they come back and recalculate that reimbursement amount, and in this case, it's increased.
Okay. So every district would get a recap, would have the potential to get a recalculated amount?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Let's see, Mr. Churchman, you had 8.05, international language?
That's correct. Just wanted to comment on this. Just continue to be thrilled with the results that we're getting out of this program. I think just indoctrinating foreign language options into our elementary schools is absolutely the right kinds of things that we need to do. As I look at the statistics on here, they all seem to be very strong from my perspective, very favorable. The one that did catch my eye, that I would like some feedback on, was the- was the teachers talk about their preparation level, and it's, I think, 54% or thereabouts. I'd like some insights to, what can we do to really increase that number?
Mr. Churchman, we have, Mr. Martin is here, he's part of the study team on this, as well as Ann Sandoval, our coordinator of international language. And you can see, this is a professional council committee meeting, so also Larry Spotts and others were involved in this as well, but I think they can address your question.
And you're talking about the, what we call the International Language Associates, not the classroom teacher, but those who facilitate the program, right?
That is correct. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. Ann Sandoval, who's been working with them, we, if you remember last year when we did this really fairly comprehensive evaluation, we identified some target areas that we wanted to make sure that we addressed this year. Training for, we call them ILAs, was one, and we've done a number of things, and I'm gonna let Ann address that, because she's kind of helped facilitate this, this year, as well as parent communication. We're still identifying parent communication as an area that we want to continue to target. But I'm gonna let Ann address the, the training.
From the percentages that I saw, to what you're referring here, I would say, that doesn't surprise me from the fall semester, but we have probably tripled our training since then. And Earl and I got together and said, you know what, these people need to see more of each other and more of us. They need more hands-on things, because they're not certified teachers. They need a whole lot more support from us. So, we've done a lot. In January, we met with them. We met with them on February the 8th. I'll be meeting with them. I also put together an advisory council of the ones who had been with us the previous year to start out and that were still with us, because they felt so much more comfortable with the program the second year. And I had about five people show up to that, and we met several times, and that helped a lot as well. And I think that's one thing that catapulted Earl and I into saying, we just need to meet with the ILAs every month. And I think if you talk to them, we're gonna meet with them again next week, the AM of the 14th. We have a lot more support now than we have had. And you know what we're learning as we go of what their needs are too, and trying to address those.
I think that's a great way to approach this. I know the feedback that I get on this program is nothing but positive. When parents kind of hedge a little bit about where they want to make sure that this is getting the right attention, it is on that preparation, because I know there was a lot of conversation about, why can't we have Spanish-speaking accredited teachers in the classrooms? And we know the challenges with that. So, I just compliment you for that. I think we need to continue to push this on. I'm very encouraged by the limited number of students that are opting out of it, and the fact that we've got all of the high-level technology now in all the classrooms, so I think those are all positives. We just need to continue to invest in this. It's an evolution over time, and I think it's showing the benefits.
I wanted to reinforce a couple of things that Ann said. One is, it was probably just slightly prior to mid-year that we determined, because they are kind of alone in a way in terms of what they do in a building. And we felt like they needed some additional kind of district support. So, about mid-year, we kind of changed how we were approaching that. Plus, we did one other very important thing that's making a critical difference about that time as well, is we designated one of our ILAs who's really shown a great deal of superiority in terms of delivering the program to be a lead ILA trainer, so that if we have someone who, and we've had a couple of resignations during the year for different reasons, that she can go right in and help that person get on board quickly and learn the program and learn how to deliver it. And that is also making a huge difference for us.
Good. And as we talk about expanding this at additional schools, and I can see that's the vision, and I believe that's the right vision, I just would like to inquire, I believe this is planned as a base program for Woodland, our new elementary schools, is that correct?
That, that would be our intent. As you know, in this, in this report, we did not designate the schools. We wanted to hear from the board tonight. Between now and next month, we want to ask the schools that would be interested in coming on board next year and then submit those names to you at the next board meeting.
Okay, very good.
And I would, I would think that Woodland would be an appropriate school since Meadow Lane does have the program very successfully.
Okay, thank you.
I have one quick question. Mr. Pollan? They brought up 8.04 on the transportation variances. Depending the boundary decision, Woodland Elementary, no variances have been identified at this time. Now that's been established, do you perceive any or variances?
Not that, not that we're aware of this time, but if there are, we'll, we'll bring that next week, next month.
Okay. Moving on to information, written reports, there are three items under Section 9. Any questions or comments on any of those?
I had a question about the Head Start update for Dr. George. I'm assuming that onsite visit then is the one that I think Mr. Gilmore's participated in. I have, would the feds come in and review the program? Is that correct?
Yes, it's done once every three years, and will be coming up, I believe, next year for that. It is a comprehensive evaluation. They look at the instructional piece, they look at the fiscal issues, they look at the governance issues. They'll probably want to visit with some of you who have served on the Head Start Parent Policy Council, and they'll visit with staff here. They'll look at audits. It's a very comprehensive piece that they're involved in.
And will they, does that incorporate then a visit to Gardner as well? Or is it just in Olathe, or because we administer the Gardner piece?
I would anticipate that at least some of the people will have contact with instructors at the Gardner site. They may drive out there, or they may have the instructor come in, or at the very least, a telephone call. But my guess is that there'll be some onsite observation of that program, and someone will be out there. They're, they're here about a week, and they spend about three or four days actually interviewing and looking at and reviewing documents and so forth, and then they have a little bit of time to pull their materials together. And I would anticipate that they'll be at the Gardner site sometime during that timeframe.
And then, I have a question for Mr. Deener on that. Educate me, please, on our ability as a board to, if we were to choose to do so, to increase funding that we give to Head Start. Is that simply a discretionary decision that's made by the board? Or how would that work?
Continue the question again. I'm sorry.
If, what I'm seeking to understand is how, if the board elected to provide additional funding to Head Start, is that simply a budgetary decision by the board that's discretionary, meaning we could do so if we chose to? That is that, that's not solely funded by federal funds, is it?
I need to check on that for sure, but I think-
Let me take a shot at this, Mr. Deener. Let me take a shot at this, because if I, I believe, Mr. Churchman, it is all federally funded. The district provides in-kind services, which is not hard dollars.
That's a nice way of saying it, yes.
Yeah. So, if we were gonna put actual dollars into the program, that would be something we have to do out of our general fund, would it not, our general fund budget?
I don't know that there would be anything unlawful about that.
No, I agree.
But it hasn't been done, I don't believe, other than the in-kind.
Yeah, it's, historically, the gauge has been what the federal level has approved, which comes through the state to us.
And I, what, thank you for that. I know what triggers that is that the federal funding for Head Start is projected to actually decrease slightly, I believe. And so, you know, I don't know if that's hallowed ground or something that, I would like us to just look and see what our options are as a board, whether it's, how could we increase our in-kind contributions, if that would be the decision of the board? Or even if there was some alternative way towards that program?
Well, it begs the question, that I know if we went down this road, we would hear, let's spend the money on full-day kindergarten versus, you know, that's the kind of thing we'll get into debating, where do we spend those kind of resources for preschool-type of events? Dr. Banakowski's shaking her head. I know that's, that's probably part of the discussion we get into. I'm not saying we don't go there, but that's part of what we're gonna hear.
A much more complicated decision, so I was hoping maybe we'd have something a little simpler than that. But certainly not advocating getting into that kind of discussion. But I know, and there's lots of needs, but I look at the fact they've got a waiting list of 44 children, and just something that I just would like to understand what our options are, and, if any.
Yeah, I can say that Dr. George and I have talked about this every year since I've been superintendent, that the needs are greater than the resources that they have. And another thing, for your awareness, the staff there do not get paid on our salary schedule. And so, that's kind of hard sometimes, when they're working side by side with other Olathe District staff. We hold their contracts as the fiscal agent, but they're not on our salary schedule. So, there's, there's a lot of entanglements here. I, I don't think there's any of us in this room that would not like to see more funding and support for that, but then it is competing with everything else, because it comes out of the same fund.
Forty-four children would be four classrooms, right? Yeah, so, two full-time teachers, two, yeah.
And I think that this goes to the heart of what I, I see is expanded local control, the ability to have more flexibility from a fiscal perspective. And, and these are things that will benefit those kinds of opportunities. School Plus is another area where we can benefit by those kinds of opportunities. So, I just think as a board, we need to go back to, as Dr. George talked about tonight, innovation, how we can be innovative in some of these areas potentially.
I just had one other question for Dr. Banakowski, and that was, with our international language program, how has that impacted what we've done above the elementary level? I know, example would be, we've gone to sixth grade with our pre-algebra. We continue to be innovative. So, how has this program impacted what now is being offered or has it at the upper grades?
I think what we're gonna find is, as this program becomes throughout the district and is very much an opportunity for our students, we're gonna see some differences in our international language program at the junior high. When you have students that have gone through this complete Spanish program at the elementary level, we're gonna see some different choices that students will be able to make by the time they get into, whether it's to having a different language, such as French, or it's looking at upper levels of Spanish. So, I think it will change our curriculum somewhat. It has certainly been a positive, which I think there was some fear that there will be some negative impact on reading and math and the core subject areas, but we've not seen that at all. I think that in our preliminary discussions and preliminary data is showing very positive in that way. But I do think it will modify as we go over time. And of course, our next goal is to continue to improve the program and to continue to expand the program.
Because some of those children are feeding into junior highs fairly soon, aren't they?
Yes. Not, they haven't had the program, the entire length of the program, but they certainly have some skills that they may not have had before. I had someone recently mention a student at seventh grade and talking about quarter classes, and that they would really not need to take the Spanish, because they'd already been introduced to what you might do in a quarter class and doing some different, being able to do, open up their schedule a bit because of their experiences. So, that's just beginning. And just kind of like pre-algebra has had some impact on where our students are going in our math curriculum, and this will have that as well. And it's a good problem to have.
Okay, thank you.
All right, our last item is an executive session, and Dr. All informs me we'll need 20 minutes. And we will not deal with an issue related to acquisition of real property, so if someone will make the motion absent that.
I move that the board recess to executive session to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel, to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, and to consult with attorney on matters deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest, to return to regular session at 8:50.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Miss Ashley?
Yes.
The motion passes. We're adjourned to executive session.